Meeting for April 17th to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call, let the record show that all of City Council is here except for John Wilkins. The mayor is absent. We have minutes to approve from April 10th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, they are approved. And now it's time for public comment. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? If so, come up to the podium. I totally skipped scheduling the committee meetings. I'm sorry. Off to a rocky start.[66.81][66.81](Laughter). I'm just, I'll, just give me a second. Sorry, guys. It's time to schedule the committee meetings for this week. And our city clerk, Marty Raybine, will do that. Ms. Raybine, thanks.
Thanks. The Parks and Conservation meeting will meet this committee, will meet this coming Wednesday, the 19th of April, from 10:10 in the morning until 10:50. Administration and Finance follows from 10:55 to 11:40. Committee of the whole will meet from noon until 1:30. The Land Use and Planning Committee will meet from 1:50 to 2:40. Committee of the whole will meet again at 2:40 to 3:05. And Budget Committee will meet from 3:10 to 3:40. Now, the meeting, the Committee of the Whole meeting from noon to 1:30 is being held at the Public House at 1:30 West Broadway. And all of the other meetings that I named are being held right here in the Council Chambers at 1:40 West Pine. Thanks.
The committee chairs or anyone have any feedback on that schedule? Okay, then that will be the committee's schedule for Wednesday. And now, for reals, we have public comment on items not on the agenda. If you'd like to say something about something that's not on the agenda, come on up to the microphone, which is always on, and say your name. And try to keep, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Okay, thank you. My name is Danielle Vasquez, and I am the Vice President of the Kiyo Native American Student Association out of the University of Montana. And one of the main things we do is we fundraise and plan the annual Kiyo celebration, which is actually happening this weekend at the Adams Center, Friday and Saturday. And I guess we just want to take this time to invite everybody to our event. Kiyo is actually one of the largest cultural event that happens in Missoula. We bring in approximately 4,000 people to the city of Missoula.
I'll save two spots. My name is Kaylee Bignite, and I'm kind of like media specialist, poster making extraordinaire. This is actually my work. So with hosting such an event as Kiyo, it takes a lot of funding, and most of our time is spent fundraising. And currently, we're looking for sponsorships for various dance categories. So this ranges from men's, women's, and also tiny tots. So we're looking for sponsorships for that. And so with that, we'd like to thank you for your time, and we again invite you, and we look forward to seeing you. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. We are on Facebook, and we also have our own U of M website. So with that, thanks.
I have been to that powwow, and it's really fun to watch all the dancers. And I also learned, I've lived here for a long time, and I just learned last year that Kiyo means grizzly. Is it true? Yeah? Great. Thanks for the announcement. Any more public comment on items not on the agenda?
Candy Matthew Jenkins. Again, reading from the Soviet art of brainwashing, psychopolitics, the art of mental healing. Read into the House Un-American Activities Committee between the years 1936 and 1939. The ability of the organism to stand punishment is great. Complete implicit response can be gained only by stimuli sufficiently brutal to injure the organism. The Cossack method of breaking wild horses is a good example. The horse will not restrain itself or take any of the rider's commands. The rider wishing to break it mounts the, mounts and smashes a flask of strong vodka between the horse's ears. The horse struck to its knees, its eyes filled with alcohol, mistaking the dampness for blood, instantly and therefore, instantly and therefore gives its attention to the rider and never needs further breaking. Difficulty in breaking horses is occasioned only when light punishments are administered. You often hear of some mawkish sentimentality about breaking the spirit. But what you want here is an obedient horse, and a sufficient brutality brings about that obedient horse.
And is there any more public comment on items not on the agenda?
All right, so I'm Gary Bruin, and I'm a senior at Big Sky High School. And so every day after school, I take Tower Street and to Third Street, and then Third Street to Reserve Street to get home. And while on Third Street, I've witnessed like many children and parents walking down the side of the road or riding their bikes, and they always like fall into the road and stuff. And it's just, it's really dangerous. And there's like, I don't know, just I've noticed this so many times, it just really bothers me that there's no safe way for students or children or family members to get like to and home from school. And I've heard that this is like part of a county's problem, that by Hawthorne School is what this is part of. But I just wanted to bring it to your ears' attention because I thought this would be a good place to start and just getting some support because it's pretty not smart for kids to be walking on the road. So I think like a path or something would be great. And it could even connect all the way to the end of Third Street where that corner is, that, because then there's that path that goes by Target Range and all the way down, and they could even connect. And it would just be great for like even the community as a whole, because then a lot of people could just use it. And like it would open up for the students to have better field trips because they could walk instead of having to go on a bike or something. So.
Thank you so much for your comments. Right, any more comments on items not on the agenda? Okay. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in City Council Committees by unanimous vote. We save time at council meetings by voting on these items as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. There's six items on tonight's consent agenda, and always, the first item is to approve claims. Claims are the city's accounts payable. And this week, number one is in the amount of $544,056.43 for checks that are dated tomorrow, April 18th, 2017. Number two is to approve claims in the amount of, related to the water acquisition, in the amount of $73,417.33 for checks that are dated April 18th, 2017. Number three is to adopt a resolution declaring it to be the intention of the City Council of the city of Missoula, Montana, to close and vacate rights of way, being portions of Front Street, Owen Street, and a 20-foot wide alley located in the W.J. McCormick Sedition, located in blocks 24, 25, and 56, and the U.S. Military Road, subject to 11 conditions of approval, and set a public hearing on that matter for May 8th of 2017. Number four is to award the construction manager at risk contract for the Mary Avenue West Street Improvements Project located in Urban Renewal District Number Three to Grant Creek Excavating, L.L.C., in an amount not to exceed the guaranteed maximum price of $1,5419. Number five is to set a public hearing on May 1st, 2017, on a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget and capital improvement program that increases the total parking commission budget by $48,000, and appropriates the Parking Commission Professional Services Fund in the amount of $48,000 in order to hire a parking consultant to analyze current facilities and prepare a request for proposals to upgrade the current gating equipment in Central Park, Park Place, and Caris Park, as well as purchase new Gate Arm equipment to be installed in the student housing project. And finally, number six is to set a public hearing on May 1st, 2017, on a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula as set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget, and increases the total city budget by $250,000 in order to construct and provide construction engineering services on the Clark-Fulck Lane roadway construction project, and transferring appropriations within and among expenditure classes totaling $392,000 for fiscal year number 2000, fiscal year 2017 budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Does anyone in the audience have any comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? City Council have any questions or comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, it looks like we're ready for a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Haddall? Haddall votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Wilkins? Wilkins is absent. That is 11 i's and one absent.
Next is when we would do the comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum, but I am not aware of any of these. Are there some I'm not aware of that fall into this category? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead to special presentations, which are also known as mayoral proclamations. And we have three. I'm going to take them in the opposite order that they're listed on the agenda. The first one is for Arbor Day. Pretend I'm reading these in the voice of Mayor John Engen. Whereas Arbor Day is a special day observed throughout the nation and around the world since 1874 for the planting of trees. And whereas Missoula has been a Tree City USA recipient for 29 years, and our city is blessed with beautifully treed mountainsides, tree-lined rivers, and canopy-covered yards giving us pleasurable spaces for living, working, and playing. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide for wild, bleh, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, John Engen, Mayor of the city of Missoula and the state of Montana, hereby proclaims April 28th, 2017 as Arbor Day, and urges all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of pleasant, present and future generations. And is there anyone here who'd like to receive this and perhaps make a comment? Not to put anyone on the spot, city forester Chris Boza?
Happy Arbor Day. Did you have a second?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak briefly on Arbor Day. This year, we'll be holding Run for the Trees, which is our annual Arbor Day celebration. We'll be doing that on Saturday. We have a 5 and a 10K run. On Friday, the evening before, will be the official Arbor Day celebration. It will be at the grand opening of the Missoula Art Park at the Missoula Art Museum. So folks are always welcome to come down for that. For those folks who are out, out and about, we will also have seedlings that will be given away at the Good Food Store between the hours of 10 and 1:00. And I will be there answering any questions that folks may have about seedlings and/or trees. So those are our scheduled events for this weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boza. The next one is for Pride Week. Whereas all LGBTQ+ Americans are deserving of the same dignity, respect, justice, and rights afforded to all citizens, a principle bolstered in 2015 with the landmark decision of the Supreme Court guaranteeing marriage equality across all 50 states. And whereas Pride Week is a celebration of the strides made by LGBTQ+ individuals all over the nation, and a recognition that LGBTQ+ rights are human rights. And whereas the first celebration of LGBTQ+ pride was a riot against oppressive forces, and as a community, and we as a community must continue the long tradition of affirming those rights, dismantling oppression, and working to ensure that all citizens will be judged by the content of their character, and that all people have a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the University of Montana's Pride Week does not take place during June, when most pride events occur, but centers around the Day of Silence, a student-led national event, now therefore, John Engen, Mayor of the city of Missoula and the state of Montana, hereby recognizes the week of April 17 through 21, 2017, as Pride Week. And have signed this in, there's usually something about encouraging all people of Missoula to celebrate Pride Week. And I work at the University of Montana, and there's a lot happening in the UC today. And I got an awesome U.M. Pride t-shirt, and I came so close to wearing it tonight, and now I wish that I did, because I'm very proud to read this. Is there anyone here who wanted to accept it? Okay, well, it is Pride Week, and I'm happy for that proclamation. And we have one more tonight. This is to celebrate Religious Freedom Week. Whereas there is an alarming escalation of national and local incidents and rhetoric directed against immigrants, refugees, and people of faith. And whereas we are Americans who value freedom of religion and want to create a positive environment where we can learn from each other's faiths. And whereas Missoula has a long history of embracing diversity and dignity for all people by statute and practice. And whereas we believe that open dialogue that doesn't demonize any side is critical to address the fears and concerns that exist. And whereas we want our community to be a place where all people feel welcome and appreciated, now therefore, John Engen, Mayor of the city of Missoula, hereby recognizes the week of April 24th through the 30th as Celebrate Religious Freedom Week in Missoula. A week of learning and dialogue, understanding and celebration of the heritage of our Muslim citizens, friends, and visitors. We invite people of our city, county, and region to participate in a series of events aimed at building positive relationships among us. And I do believe there is someone here who would like to receive this and make some comments.
Hello, my name is Lori Franklin, and I am a resident of Missoula, and I serve the Jewish community as the leader of Har Shalom. And I see many faces that I know, and friendly faces, and I thank you for your support. And I also would like to state as well that I'm really glad to receive this and share the honor of receiving a mayoral proclamation with it, with both Arbor Day and Pride Week. I just want to say a couple of words, and I'm here with Ayman Ormseth, who has been the convener of a little organization called Salam that we constituted in December of 2015, when we were very concerned about rise in religious intolerance specifically directed towards people of the Islamic faith. And we're inspired to work together as an interfaith movement in Missoula, the three Abrahamic faiths, Judaism, Islam, and Christianity. And also with those of the non-Islamic background, we also have fellow cooperators who are from Buddhist religion, Buddhist practice, as well as Hindu background and others. So it's, our base is broad. And our goal is to build relationships and to dispel misunderstandings and fears. And this is the eve of the last day of the Jewish holiday of Passover, which is a holiday that celebrates freedom. And so in line with that idea, we would like to celebrate freedom from misunderstanding and freedom from fear, and celebrate our Muslim neighbors and friends here in Missoula. And I'd like to introduce you to Ayman Ormseth.
Thanks. I'll make this quick. I just wanted to briefly go over a few of the events. So our opening banquet, we're going to have some of the local Muslim refugee families be cooking. And it's a $15 cost to get in at First Prez. We're going to have some discussion, a few presentations. It should be good. If you want to come, note the RSVP link in there, because we're running out of tickets fast. The following evening, we're screening The White Helmet, a documentary about rescue workers in Syria who are going to buildings after they've been hit by airstrikes. Wednesday, we're going to have some students present about their travels to the Islamic world. Thursday, we're bringing in a speaker from Zaituna College, which is the first Islamic liberal arts college in the United States down in Berkeley. And then on Saturday and Sunday, we have two great interactive events. We have the Dances of Universal Peace at Congregation Har Shalom, and that's at 6:00 PM. And then we have Crossing the Bridge, which is a workshop that was created by two Holocaust survivors that's designed to help us overcome the barriers that separate us. So it would be great to see any or and all of you there, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Next, we have two public hearings. State law and City Council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the City Council and mayor invite community comment. The City Council normally votes on the same night as the public hearing unless one council member requests that it be returned to a City Council Committee for further consideration. And first, we have Mr. Drew Larson from Development Services.
Thank you, and Drew Larson, Development Services. And tonight, I'm presenting an annexation request from Northern Rockies Orthopedics, represented tonight by Dale McCormick of PCI, for property located at 2718, 2742, and 2802 South Avenue West. The applicants are proposing a new medical office directly north of Community Medical Center. So as you can see, that is, the property is located directly north of the Community Medical Center along Reserve Street. It is approximately two, two and a half blocks west of Reserve. And again, yeah, just right next to the Community Medical and the Fort Missoula Regional Park. It is located adjacent to Ward Number Six and the Two Rivers Neighborhood Council. The subject property currently contains one two-unit house, also known as a duplex, and two detached houses, as well as a few accessory structures that will be removed prior to annexation and before the new medical office construction. The property is accessed from South Avenue West, which is a minor arterial. It requires a minimum of 80 feet of right-of-way or public road easement to meet our complete streets policy in the city of Missoula. Currently, this section of South Avenue is in a 30-foot, 35-foot right-of-way that was annexed in July 2015 along with the Fort Missoula Regional Park. The subject property is encumbered with a 50-foot public road, public road and utility easement on the southernmost extent of lots 31A and 31B. The lot west of 31A does not appear to have any right-of-way or public roadway easement recorded against the property. So a recommended condition in the resolution to annex requires the title property owners to dedicate 45 feet of additional right-of-way or public roadway and utility easement along that southern extent of the portion of Track 31 of Coben and Dinsmore Orchard Homes Number Three, lying west of Lot 31A, to complete the 80-foot right-of-way slash easement for the South Avenue adjacent to the subject property. Getting into the zoning upon annexation, Title 20, which is consistent with state law, permits municipalities to assign city zoning at the time of annexation as long as the zoning meets any of the following criteria. One, that is city zoning that is comparable to the existing county zoning, authorized land uses that were approved by county officials, and three, be consistent with the land use and zoning recommendations as set forth in the growth policy. So the existing zoning is ZD 12, a citizen-initiated zoning district established in 1959 and last amended in 1979. The county zoning permits one dwelling unit per 12,000 square feet, and the permitted building types are detached house and two-unit house. The comparable city zoning would be RT 10 residential, which permits the same residential building types and permits one dwelling unit per 10,000 square feet. There were no special land uses approved by county officials, so we'll just jump into the land use. The applicable regional plan in the city is R. Missoula City Growth Policy 2035, which was adopted in November of 2015, which recommends a land use designation of neighborhood mixed use. This land use designation is intended to support a mix of neighborhood serving commercial uses and medium-high residential density. Suggested uses include retail offices, including professional and medical, entertainment, professional services, eating and drinking, and shopfront retail. In addition, the R. Missoula recommends B1, B2, or, and M1R zoning districts for the neighborhood mixed-use land use designation. So based on the current land use designation, staff recommends that council adopt a resolution to annex and zone the subject property B2-2 Community Commercial or Community Business in the city of Missoula. Thank you very much. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thanks. And does the applicant's representative want to say anything?
Good evening, members of the City Council. For the record, Dale McCormick with Professional Consultants. I want to thank Drew for all his work on this annexation. And, you know, this is a case where you have a very successful group of orthopedic surgeons that wants to expand their business and is so successful that they've run out of space. And so being close to the Community Medical Campus where they're currently located is an exciting opportunity for them. And we'd appreciate your support of this annexation request, and we concur with the conditions that staff has recommended. So, thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments about this project? Okay. I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to City Council questions. Does anybody have any questions about this project? Okay, then we will just go straight to that committee, which is Land Use and Planning, right? Mr. Dabari? Dr. Dabari?
So I move to adopt a resolution to annex 2718 through 2802 South Avenue West, lying north of the, of Community Medical Center and approximately three blocks west of Reserve Street, and legally described as a portion of Track 31 and lots 31A and 31B of Coben and Dinsmore Orchard Homes Number Three, and zone the property B2-2 Community Business in the city, all located in Section 30 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Principal Meridian, Montana. May I speak to that briefly?
Go ahead.
So I'm in support of, whoops, sorry. I'm in support of the motion, and I would like to thank the applicants in their interest in providing the necessary right-of-way and public access easement along South Avenue, as I know that it was a little bit goofy how that was set up in the past, and it was unsure whether the, the right- unsure whether the right, the correct right-of-way existed. But the doctors were interested in supporting the community's interest in garnering that right-of-way so that we can establish a, a good pedestrian environment along South Avenue in the future.
Thanks. Is there any more discussion from city council? Seems louder than usual. I'm sure everything's fine. Are we ready for a roll call vote? Ms. Raybine?
On the resolution to annex the property, Bentley, I'm sorry? Bentley? Yes, Bentley votes yes. I thought you said pass, and I'm like, I don't think. Kares, Kares votes yes. DeBary, DeBary votes yes. Hetal, Hetal votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Marler?
Yes.
Marler votes yes. Swainy, Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg, Von Losberg votes yes. West, West votes yes. Armstrong, Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one absent.
Okay, our next public hearing is on the 2016 Missoula Long Range Transportation Plan, and we have a staff report from Jessica Morris, our Transportation Planning Manager.
Good evening. Jessica Morris, City Transportation Planning Manager and manager for the Missoula Metropolitan Planning Organization. Tonight, we are before you, asking for you to adopt the 2016 Long Range Transportation Plan, also known as Activate Missoula 2045, as an issue plan to the City of Missoula 2035 Growth Policy. This slide shows a little bit about the relationship of the Missoula Long Range Transportation Plan to the city-county growth policies, as well as a handful of the various master plans that are intended to feed into the Long Range Transportation Plan, including city-specific plans and plans such as from Mountain Line or the MRA. The Long Range Transportation Plan is updated every four years by the MPO. It's intended to be a regional transportation plan that covers all modes of transportation, and it looks at a 30-year planning horizon. And the purpose of the plan is to recommend projects and funding allocations, both federal and local, over all modes of transportation over that 30-year planning horizon. This slide shows our process that we went through to update the Long Range Transportation Plan. We started back in the fall of 2015, and we have recently gone through the adoption process with our governing bodies. And so we are, it was basically about an 18-month process from start to finish. And the TPCC adopted it in, I'm going to skip through this. The TPCC and the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee both adopted the plan in February, and we recently received approval from Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration, the EPA, and also, I should say, DEQ, State DEQ, and the Montana Department of Transportation. We got that approval from them on April 4th. So what we are asking from the city council is to consider this plan as an issue plan, a quote-unquote "issue" plan, to the Missoula City Growth Policy. And the city growth policy defines an issue plan as a plan that provides a detailed analysis and policy guidance on specific infrastructure, facilities, development, or conservation issues identified in the growth policy. So some examples of previously approved issue plan would include the North Reserve Scott Street Master Plan, which came before you a few months back. So we're asking for you to treat this plan as you treated that plan. So the planning board, we took this to the planning board on March 24, 21st, and they found the Long Range Plan to be in conformity with the city growth policy, as well as the county growth policy, and recommended that it be approved as an issue plan. And so the recommended motion tonight is to adopt a resolution adopting the 2016 Missoula Long Range Transportation Plan as an issue plan.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing on this item. Does anyone have any comments about this transportation plan? All right, I'll close the public hearing on this one, too. Everyone's so agreeable tonight. Let's go to questions from city council, if there are any. Okay, and my agenda says that this is in land use and planning. Is that true? Because it seems like it would be Public Works. But, okay.
I'm happy to make the motion.
Let's do, let's do that. Thank you.
I move to adopt a resolution adopting the 2016 Missoula Long Range Transportation Plan Activate Missoula 2045 Issue Plan. May I speak to it briefly again?
Please do.
So I, I want to thank Jessica and her staff and all the citizens of Missoula who participated in this. I think it was a really fantastic public outreach effort, and I really appreciate the level of effort that staff put into crafting the Long Range Transportation Plan, and I think it'll serve the community well as it sort of unfolds. So thanks.
Mr. Von Losberg.
Thanks. I just wanted to also express my thanks to Jessica and the staff that worked on it and everybody in the public that participated. It's incredibly, as I said in committee when we reviewed this, it's an incredibly detailed plan, and it's nice to see the deliberate process used and the tying, tying into the funding, and then how that gets back to projects and scoring, and really gives you a sense. So for those who are willing and have the stomach to be able to sort through the details, it's an impressive process by which we get to the rankings and such that are in there, and really just wanted to say thanks.
Mr. Hess?
Thanks. This has been in both committees, so that's part of the confusion here, I guess. I, I want to agree with or echo what Mr. DeBary and Mr. Von Losberg said. This has been quite a process, and Jessica and the Transportation Division have, have taken what is a required federal process and turned it into something that is beyond that and useful for our community. It's an aspirational plan, and it, it has a lot of really exciting goals regarding mode split and, and funding allocations, and I think that we'll be better for it as a community as we implement the plan.
Ms. Bentley?
I have the same sentiment as everyone else, and I won't repeat what they said, but I just wanted to say thanks for the excellent process and I'm happy to support this.
Okay, any more discussion? Ms. Armstrong?
This is a very detailed plan, and I know that there's extensive outreach, and I'm also on the health board, and we looked at this as well. I won't be supporting this only because I would have preferred that the moderate mode split, we were, my ward in particular, is, is a little sensitive to transportation issues right now. That's the Linda Vista-Miller Creek area, and the ambitious option was not what they were looking for on this. So I, I'll be voting no, but I absolutely love many parts of this plan.
Ms. West?
I just wanted to just briefly mention how fun the whole public process was and the meetings, and also the really cool Wiki Maps tool that was up for a while that allowed, you know, people across the community to actually document their transportation experiences, whether that is on foot or bikes, or where accidents have occurred or safety issues were. And I think that this was a great process, and I'm in support of the plan, so.
Okay, looks like we're ready for a roll call vote.
On the resolution adopting the Long Range Transportation Plan Activate Missoula 2045, we'll start roll with Kares.
Yes.
Kares votes yes. DeBary?
Yes.
DeBary votes yes. Hetal?
No.
Hetal votes no. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Yes.
Marler votes yes. Swainy?
Swainy votes yes.
Von Losberg?
Von Losberg votes yes.
West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Armstrong?
Armstrong votes no.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is nine ayes, two nays, and one absent.
All right, we'll move on to general comments of the city council, and let's start with Dr. Swainy.
Thank you. I wanted to say I appreciated the community that came in this evening, either for a public comment or for proclamations. I also wanted to acknowledge a few other events that are going to be occurring this week. This week is the Indian Law Week at the university. Also, coming into town will be the Montana Indian Education Association Conference. They'll be here in Missoula. And then today, or today, this week is also the 14th Annual Native Youth Conference. And so I, I just wanted to acknowledge those other events that'll be going on this week. Thank you.
Ms. Bentley? Ms. West? Ms. Jones? Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Kares? Ms. Armstrong? Dr. DeBary? Ms. Hetal? Mr. Von Losberg?
Just wanted to quickly mention this Saturday, Heidi, I'm right about this, right? Coming Saturday, March for Science Missoula. I know President Marler, I believe you'll be in Helena, and Heidi and I are going to participate in that event, and I just wanted to mention it. There's some advertising on Facebook for it, starting 1 o'clock Saturday in Karas Park, and we'll be excited to be there.
Yep, so just to clarify, you and Ms. West will be at the March for Science Missoula, and I'll be at the March for Science in Helena. And if anyone wants to carpool, hit me up. I think it'd be great to get large turnout at all the marches for science. Okay. We have, we do have a committee report tonight. Items listed under committee reports were not approved unanimously in city council committees. The chairperson of the, excuse me, of the standing city council committee will make a motion reflecting the committee's actions, and we invite community comment on each item. And I believe we just have one, and it's in pub, one, oh, they're both in Public Works, Let's just go to Public Works. Mr. Hess?
Thank you, President Marler. If I may, I'd make both motions at once. So I move that we adopt a resolution relating to Brook Street, Stevens Avenue, Mount Avenue, Phase One curb and sidewalk improvements, Project 15-015 of the city's sidewalk curb, gutter, and alley approach program, approving the final order, ordering in of improvements, and also that we award the bid for curb and sidewalk improvements, Project 15-015, Brook Street, Stevens Avenue, Mount Avenue, to CSS contracting for the amount of $874,703.04 and authorize the return of bid bonds. And may I speak to the motions?
Yes, go ahead.
This is another exciting project in our, in our effort to repair and replace sidewalks. This project did prompt a lot of great discussion regarding our sidewalk priorities, but I think the project has emerged as an important one in a neighborhood that, that needs some sidewalk repairs. So I'm looking forward to supporting the motions.
Okay, additional discussion on the motions? Ms. Jones?
This is in my ward, and I'm in favor of the, the motions. There are areas that do need work. And I also wanted to put on the, I wanted to communicate that a referral has gone out to discuss raising the cap on the sidewalk subsidy. Currently, the city of Missoula contributes up to $15,000 in a formula for the sidewalk costs, and it would raise the cap from 15,000 to 20,000. So we'll be discussing that in the near future.
Any more discussion? Ms. West?
I'm the reason that this is in committee reports. I don't tend to vote against projects, sidewalk projects, but I did vote against it in this case because there is one particular lot that has a much higher cost burden, and it also has an incomplete, the, the sidewalk totals, an incomplete picture of the potential costs to the homeowner, because it also includes potentially and very likely removing ten trees from their corner lot, and those costs are not factored into this and would also be borne by the homeowner, even if the subsidy is increased that covers the cost of the sidewalk, but not necessarily the removal of all of her street trees.
Any more discussion? I will, oh, Ms. Bentley, go ahead.
I'm going to support the project. I put in a referral, and we, Brian and Heidi and I initiated a discussion to rethink the way that we, or at least get a better picture of the way that we pick the neighborhoods and the areas that need improvements. I think this project was an important trigger, an important catalyst for the council. But I also support it, and I think that, that although I wasn't happy with every piece of it, it's not really my MO to come at the end and sort of undo staff's work. I'm happy that we're rethinking the way that we're doing things, and I think there are really important pieces of this project that need to happen, and there is certainly a neighborhood that is very active on, and pedestrian, needs the pedestrian infrastructure. So I'm going to support the project. I'm glad that we're changing the way that we're doing things moving forward. I think this was an important catalyst, and, yeah.
Okay, if everyone's made comments, I'll just comment that I, I voted against this project in a previous stage because I feel strongly that we should be refoc, we should be focusing our resources on building sidewalks where we don't have any sidewalks as a higher priority than repairing and replacing sidewalks. It's not always a black and white project, and I'm not going to vote against the project after it's come to this point. There, I mean, it's, it's happening, and as people have mentioned, it's a good, it's triggered a lot of good discussions, and I appreciate staff's work on this. It's not always easy. Is there any public comment on either of these motions? Public, the public is not commenting much tonight. So we'll go ahead, and nobody on council wants to divide the question or anything? Okay, so we'll go ahead and do roll call vote for both.
Okay, this is to adopt the resolution that confirms the ordering in of the sidewalk improvements and awards the bid. And we start roll with DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Hetal?
Yes.
Hetal votes yes. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Yes.
Marler votes yes. Swainy?
Swainy votes yes.
Von Losberg?
Von Losberg votes yes.
West?
Yes.
West votes no. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. Bentley?
Bentley votes yes.
And Kares?
Yes.
Kares votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 10 ayes, one nay, and one absent.
We have one item of new business, which is our standing item for the legislative update. Did anyone have any items they wanted to discuss related to the legislative session? No one notified me of any, but you could still bring them up right now if you wanted to. Ms. Bentley?
I just wanted to give an update that the bill that Senator Facy was working on at the request of Councilwoman Jones and myself about VRBOs, giving local municipalities more authority to regulate them, did not make it out of House Judiciary Committee. However, he encourages us to take up the issue again, and Kalispell and Bozeman both have, are both working on and moving forward much more stringent regulations than ours. And the League of Cities and Towns also encourages us to do what we need to do to regulate these on a local level. So I feel like we can take it up this summer and fall. And I know that Gwen and I have been talking to our constituents and promised them that we would put in a referral to that effect. effect, so.
Okay, thanks. Any more? All right. Are there any items to be referred other than the ones listed here? Dr. DeBary?
Can I ask a quick question? I just noticed that on the committee agenda, we have two items for LUP, but on the items to be referred, there's only one, and I'm not sure if that's an error or if that's common. I just happened to notice that and wanted to double-check that that wasn't an issue.
So, this sounds like a question for Ms. Raybine. So, you're saying under the committee reports, there's two, shows two referrals?
Right, so for this coming Wednesday, the LUP agenda, committee agenda has two items, but on the items to be referred list under LUP, there's only one item.
Is it possible that the ordinance modifying historic preservation commission membership requirements was previously referred?
Yeah, I think it's just an error by staff. We wanted to pull the item from the planning board, put it on the council agenda, and then put it in Land Use and Planning, and I think they missed the step of putting it on the council agenda and then getting it over to Land Use and Planning. But just for everybody's clarity, yeah, the Historic Preservation Commission member requirements are being forwarded to the Land Use and Planning Committee after having been heard by the planning board, and the planning board's made a recommendation to the council on that matter.
Okay, so after the meeting tonight, that referral will be linked on the committee?
Yeah, I'll put it, I can put that under your items to be referred, so.
Okay, I'm less, well, I guess it's good to have it in both places, but the main one, I think, is that if it's linked from the committee schedule, because I think that's where people usually go first to see what's being discussed.
Yes, and I think it's listed on the committee schedule.
Okay, great.
I see it on the committee schedule, at least the one that's on my desk, and I'll double-check that it's on line in LUMP and everything.
I keep trying to click the link on this paper, and it's not taking me there, so I thought I would ask. Okay. Oh, my gosh, I'm so funny. Okay. Do we have any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? I see that we have our usual administratively-approved agreement report, so that is there if anyone would like to look at it. How about other miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.